We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order in five, four, three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to today's special council meeting Wednesday, April 24th. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We will have a teleconference participation at this meeting from Councilmember Smith pursuant to the California Brown Act Rules for Just Cause Attendance. Councilmember Smith, please respond to the following questions. Can you hear me well?
I can.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, I have.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Please give us a brief description of the circumstances relating to your need to appear remotely.
I'm out of town on business and I could not rearrange the schedule.
Is anyone over the age of eighteen with you in the room?
No, they're not.
Can everyone hear from Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Everybody good? All right. The Brown Act requires that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of the meeting be taken by roll call. Let's see if I can remember that. And with that, I'll pass it to Clementine to do roll call and share with the public on how you all can participate in public comment.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we ask attendees to keep your masks and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
With that, we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Dr. Barber to kick us off here.
Let me begin. Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. And with that, we'll move on to consent agenda. There was no items known to be polled at this time. Anybody in the council wish to poll anything? All right, seeing none. There's just one item and I'm going to read this, the title, first reading of title only of an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty, Article four Sewer Service Fee to Authorize Collection on the County of Monterey Tax Roll and authorize a fee collection and indemnification agreement with Monterey One Water and/or the County of Monterey for this purpose. And with that, we'll go out to public comment. Anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? We have one in the chamber. Anybody else? Just on this item. There's no general public comment for items on the agenda because it's, this is a special meeting. So there's only the one you do. Okay, so we have two in the chamber. Anybody else? Anybody else? So just to, let me reiterate, I'm still getting used to the new rules here. So how public comment works is we offer folks opportunity to participate in public comment at the beginning of the public comment period. Once those folks are identified, that's it. We'll cut it off and only those folks get to speak. So everybody has an opportunity, but you have to identify yourself at the beginning of the public comment period. So I have two in the chamber right now. Just do one last check. All right, and then we'll check online for folks on Zoom. If you can use the raise hand function and I'll give a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And we have none online. So let's go ahead and start here in the chamber. Whoever wants to start first can step up to the mic. And you'll have three minutes.
My name is Rob Indometer and I actually was here at a city council meeting several weeks ago. This has to do with a committee that we have formed in Skyline and other people in Monterey on the safety of Skyline.
Sorry, I apologize. This is not general public comment. This is specifically to do with the item that's on the agenda.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, no, I apologize for not making that clear. Yeah, this is only for that item on the agenda and unfortunately for today's meeting, we don't take general public comment for items that aren't on the agenda. Typically for a normal council meeting, that's close, but this is a special meeting and so we're not going to be able to have the opportunity to take.
It's not a budget meeting?
This is a budget meeting. So if you have a comment on the budget, you can make a comment on that specific agenda item. But we're not doing that at this time.
I guess.
So right now, and just to, just to reiterate, right now, this is in regards to the city of Monterey, putting our portion of the sewer bill onto the county tax rolls.
Sewer bill today?
That's correct. Just this item. The next item will be right after we do this item and the council approves or denies the item that we're talking about, which is putting the sewer rate onto the tax rolls. We'll then talk about the budget and we'll open the conversation up again for the public to participate in that.
So I can participate in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No, no worries. Thank you for your patience already. All right, all right. Okay, so the other commenter has wished to withdraw that too for folks online. So we have no public comments. We're going to bring it back to the council for a vote or deliberation.
I'll move to approve.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. Thanks, everybody, for bearing with us on that one. We'll move on to the study session. Item number two on the agenda is fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget primer. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As it's standard practice, April study session is where we present to you what we think we can afford and how we can maneuver through next fiscal year and what we will fire up right now is the presentation that I hope we will have any minute on the screen. So next slide. As, as it's, can we minimize my, my slide there, my screen? As, as, as we, as I always do, I talk a little bit about the general picture, the general economic picture where we are to, to kind of set the stage also. Why we think what we are thinking here locally. Astonishingly enough, the GDP is still growing and keeps, keeps going up. And so that's generally good news. Next slide. Unemployment rates are, are at an all time low. You, you see here on, on the left hand side, basically that the unemployment rate is, is in very, very low categories and then very low percentage rates. And so that's a generally good sign. Again, I quote Bureau of Labor Statistics there as, as the, the source that that gives, gives us the data. Next slide. On the next slide, though, you, you see a slightly different picture, which is the CPI and, and you, you see that we, while we are out of the month where we had eight, nine percent of CPI, you see still here the, the CPI numbers and we are comparing March twenty-three to March twenty-four and you will see that there's accumulative effect that, that is often ignored when you talk about CPI, when, when somebody says, well, the CPI goes up by three point five percent between February and, and, and March. That's, that's really good to know, but it means it also adds up over the years. So you, when you look at how this added up over the years, we wanted to show how, how the costs have increased. You see some of those categories that affect us like the food and beverage sales. You see the food services of the restaurants, six point five percent. So these, these are effects that, that affect our local sales tax and also our tourism industry to a certain degree. Next slide. This is where the C, the CPI is developing in our area. When we do price increases or CPI increases, we are bound to use that type of CPI. And you see that, that locally, the, the CPI is, is trending, actually, I believe, below the, the nation average. Disco Oakland Hayward. And you see the, the red line is all items and they're including rent. And the blue dotted line is all items less food and energy and also includes rent. I, I refueled our car on, on Saturday dutifully at Costco in Seaside and San City and was shocked to see over five dollar price sticker, sticker on, on, on gasoline prices. They keep going up again. So, but this ends at February twenty-four. If you look at the next chart, again, I'm talking now, next chart, I'm talking now, meanwhile, in California, I spoke about overall what's going on in, in the world, in our, in our nation, but here in California, we are facing an eight, thirty-eight billion dollar shortfall for the next two fiscal years. That's what the governor tells us. The legislative budget analyst is estimating fifty-eight billion dollars for the current fiscal year. And then next fiscal year is seventy-eight billion dollar shortfall. So the five question marks kind of say, okay, where are we actually with, with here in California? Because if the state of California has shortfalls, guess what? They're taking money away from us. One of them, we, we just experienced with a mid pen housing project where we received a two point four million dollar grant for a hundred percent affordable housing project and it was just cut in half by one point two. So this will have effects on us. This may, may have effects also on our overall budget. So the next slide tells you, I think, a slightly better knowledge. That's how the, the state, the governors, I forgot right now which officers is in the state, but they are tracking the day to day incoming taxes and tax day was behind us, but taxes are still coming in. The red line shows them that they expected for April sixteen billion dollars. The blue line shows you back to the twenty-first of April, what is actually coming in and it will still go in over the next eight, nine days. So they will hit the sixteen billion dollar mark. So the analysts right now saying the governor seemed to be right on track with his thirty-eight billion dollar shortfall. So that is still thirty-eight billion dollars, nothing to, to be proud of. But it looks like that the legislative analyst has to, has to, budget analyst has to estimate a little bit downwards based on the upcoming incoming taxes. Next slide. What is interesting, what should give us pause also that economists are basically stating California might be on the leading ash or an edge of the national economic slowdown. If you have that, it has an effect also on our business here as, as tourism based. And also California is always the fifth largest or fourth largest economy in the world, as the governor always likes to present it, but we also have the highest unemployment rate in the nation. Slower job growth is happening here in California than in the rest of the nation. Next slide. Shows you where, where the unemployment is. It shows you in California, the, the unemployment, that's California data, shows you a little bit how we are losing jobs on the right hand side. The bar charts on top means adding jobs and the right hand side shows you, we, we're not adding jobs, we are losing jobs. Next slide. This is a slide from the US Bureau of Labor Statistics shows you the cities that have the highest unemployment in the nation. And all the yellow marks are our cities in the state of California. We are not doing so well as a state when you compare metropolitan areas. So all the yellow ones are where we have higher than average nationwide unemployment. Next slide. Meanwhile, in Monterey County, we, we have unemployment here always anywhere between, I don't know, four percent to eleven, twelve percent. That shows you the seasonality also of our industries. It shows you the seasonality of hospitality, but also the seasonality of the ag industry. So right now, unemployment in, in Monterey County is about ten percent, ten point five percent. Next one. So he, here are some slides that, that I, I summarize all the stuff that, that I just showed you that we put as underlying assumptions, underlying analytical conclusions into our budget. Recession is still possible. That's what everyone tells you and they say, but probably next year. So chances are, as we know, it's, it's, it's not going to happen a recession, but is it unlikely? I don't know. We estimate our revenues will not grow. We, we will have flat revenues of, at least for next year and the year thereafter. While over the post-COVID recovery, we had really significant revenue increases, kind of going back where we were in twenty nineteen. We, we are now seeing definitely that the, the revenue curves are flattening out. So we assume flat revenue assumptions. Is that good news? Probably not because the pricing goes up for, for the goods, as I showed you, we are consumer of goods. Labor cost will increase, healthcare cost will increase and other things as well. So having flat revenues is not a good thing to have. We will continue our path of fiscal health response. We have to continue watching our revenues, our expenses. We have to adjust fees where we are sailing too far behind. We, we have to negotiate fair labor contracts. We, we have to look at what our peers are paying in the municipal labor market. And our employees deserve fair labor contracts. So again, that, that is something we have to figure out. We need to continue to improve our operations. We need to streamline whenever we can find an ability to, to, to cut costs by streamlining our operations, by, by finding ways of providing the same service maybe differently with a different cost structure. We have to do that. And more importantly, also, we have to reinvest into our aging infrastructure. We have a lot of stuff here in the city and we need to focus onto our infrastructure. We have done a tremendous job in, over the past three years in creating reserves. And Raffela will, will show you what we actually did and you and the previous council should be very proud of those accomplishments and you, you should brag what, what we have done in front of our community, a little bit of that, because we have definitely improved our reserve position by, shall I say, light years. But now the next task is, okay, while we are solid on the reserves now and have a path forward, we need to look at our aging infrastructure. And I spoke about fire stations, spoke about community centers. And there are so many other assets that I don't want to name them right now. There will be a later time for that. What are our challenges? We are spending still too much money on too many things. We, we, we don't have a revenue challenge. We have an expenditure challenge. We, we have a lot of nice things and we've created a lot of nice things and we still want additional nice things. We cannot continue to do that. The next bullet addresses that. From my perspective, we need to go back to the future. We need to identify what is important for us. Our general fund dollars that are allocated to the NCIP need to include more capital intense citywide projects. We need to rehabilitate the fire stations. We need to rehabilitate the community centers. We need to rehabilitate City Hall. These are challenging times for us and there, there are potential breaks with, with past processes and procedures ahead of us, but we have to address those questions. And we should not consider creating new programs or enter into new costly partnerships. We need to keep holding the line. What we have right now is, is something that is already far and beyond any other service levels that any other city provides, any other pro, we have so many programs that other cities just can dream of and do not have. We need to keep holding the line. We don't need to push the envelope if we want to be responsible into maintaining and preserving our existing assets and infrastructure. So with that, we, we put the budget together by realizing all that where we are, have to move. And with that, I handed over to our finance director, Raffela.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. So we just go ahead and get started. So let's talk about the big picture. So starting for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, it continues with the city's vision to have a strong and prosperous Monterey. So included in our efforts are to continue to maintain the strong reserve levels. We are close tracking and monitoring and the limit, limiting the expenditures. We're making investments in the city operations for our better efficiency and also investments in the city's infrastructure. So as you know, over the past few years, the city, we've stabilized after COVID pandemic. Much, much of the tourism revenue has returned. The city is projecting to meet or exceed revenue estimates. However, as Hans mentioned earlier, the twenty twenty-five, the, the growth is, is slowing down. So we are actually starting to flatten out in this area. So also the city is rising costs. So the goods and services that continue to rise and inflation and all the external factors. Additionally, the cities were currently into the negotiation with the city's labor groups, which impacts that city salaries and benefits and the region's cost of living also remains high. Talk a little bit about our budget process. Some of you have heard this already. Our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget process starts in February of twenty twenty-four. We had a kickoff meeting with all the department heads and their budget teams. The departments were given their adjusted twenty-three, twenty-four budgets at that time and a five-year history. And they were asked to submit their anticipated needs. Then we asked them, departments provided their estimated revenues from their department programs to finance. The citywide revenues, they're compiled through estimates from departments, from trend analysis, consultants, our finance revenue staff and the city manager's office. Finance also receives our annual amount payable to CalPERS for the retirement contributions to OPEB and UAL. And then we take that amount and we determine the costs and allocate it to each department. We also have internal service costs for IT services, risk management, workers comp, vehicle maintenance and operations, vehicle replacements, and those are determined and also included into the final department expenditures. So changes this year for the allocation process for risk management, workers comp increase some departments significantly and reduce some of the other funds expense. Although the total amount won't change, additional changes, we're going to look at and make sure we find the one, we finalize the budget that we kind of shift the balance to make sure that it kind of works out for everyone. So our resolution. So the budget team, after all of that, we met with each department separately and we view their initial submitted requests. And these meetings, departments have the opportunity to explain, to justify, to defend the request. The budget team just spends a lot of hours just really meeting with the departments, reviewing, considering all the requests, making initial determinations and we, regarding the direction of the budget. And we do that in conjunction with the city's priorities and also the available resources. After the department meetings, the budget team now focuses on identifying historically underused and unused accounts. So counts that were in the budget, we look at the last five years, we looked at where these amounts spent or underspent and we took those amounts and we were able to shift some of that amount. So if you had, for example, an account, there's a hundred thousand dollars in historically last five years, you only spent fifty. There's another account that you're asking for a hundred and you, a hundred and you need a hundred and fifty. We kind of reallocated some of those expenses that we were not increasing the budget, but we were kind of doing cost neutral. So after those initial determinations, we provided updates each department. We gave them only one day, sorry, period for department, so that they can respond to us with the decisions and would provide additional feedback. We went back and reviewed again and made some more small adjustments. So that's how we came to the proposed budget that we're bringing you here today. So we had a community engagement. We had three and I'm going to have my staff financial slash budget analyst come and speak to on community engagement. Kyle Olson.
So as, as Raffela said, my name is Kyle Olson. I'm the finance analyst with the city. As Raffela mentioned, this year, we initiated a community engagement process. We did a survey as well as three formal public listening sessions that we held throughout the, the last week of February and early March. In total, between the survey and the, the sessions, we heard from more than six hundred people who contributed and provided their, their input their concerns and priorities with regards to the city's budget. Next slide. So these three sessions, as I mentioned, the first one was at the Schultz Park Center on February twenty-sixth. We had another one at the library on February twenty-ninth and the final one was on a Saturday morning at Casanova Oaknall Park Center. We tried to do them at different times and places throughout the city to try to capture people who might not be available on a weekday, but might be available on a weekend. Within those listening sessions, there was a total of twenty-seven different participants. Sixty percent reported that the addresses, the sessions addressed their concerns and seventy percent reported that they'd be interested in attending a similar session in future years. Along with an overview of the city's budget and process, we facilitated some group discussions to elicit feedback. We also did a post-participation survey where people could provide input. And we also had kind of a index card parking lot where people could write any suggestions or thoughts that they had that weren't able to share throughout the discussion. And then along with the listening sessions, we did a survey that was promoted through Have Your Say Monterey. It was available online for more than a month. It finally closed on March tenth. In total, we had five hundred and eighty-eight respondents, seventy percent of which were residents of Monterey. Forty-five percent, fifty-five are older, sixty-four percent female and sixty, sixty-one percent with an household income of less than two hundred thousand dollars. Along with that demographic information, the bulk of the survey asked participants to rank city services into two sort of hypothetical fiscal environments. One in which revenues are increasing and growing and one in which revenues are decreasing. And this is not an exhaustive list of all the city services that were ranked. But this is the top five. So in an environment, in a positive fiscal environment, so one in which revenues are growing. These were the top five city services that survey participants recommended for growth. So special events and activities, Fisherman's Wharf, museums, addressing sea level rise and then economic and vitality business districts. And then on the flip side, in a fiscal environment where revenues are not growing or perhaps the economy is shrinking, these were the items which were listed as a priority for reduction or elimination. Fire services, police services, city parks, beaches and trails, city streets, maintenance and upkeep of city buildings. So between the two, where there's increases or where there's decreases. you can see sort of where participants landed. Those ten items is not the full exhaustive list, but just the top five of each category. And then the takeaways. So what did we as the finance team get out of this? I think one thing that we all came away with is uh people are really interested, and I think it also shows in today's study session, and the city's fiscal health, and people are interested and committed to um understanding it. Also, the city library and sports center continuously came out through the survey, through the conversations as priorities or that people have a commitment and interest in. Um, and then also concerns in developing a plan to upkeep infrastructure. Um, a couple of results from this process that you'll see reflected in the presentation tonight is the proposal of additional library staff that would permit the library to open one more day per week. Um, and then also additional sports center staff to support programs and operations. And then finally, uh this process, it was the first time, at least in modern history, that we'd gone through this process. It was really nice to be able to talk with the public in a non-formal setting. It was a safe space for people to get questions, have que- who had questions and get clarification. And then also spend some time talking about the complexities and limitations of public funding sources. And uh the finance team plans on making the process of soliciting input a regular part of the budget process. And we, of course, always welcome feedback from the community.
Okay, now to get to the numbers. So for our general fund overview. So we're starting with an unassigned fund balance at June, July one, um twenty twenty three at fifteen point five million. And twenty three twenty four this year, we had our reserve contributions, which included the mid-year of eight million and some change. Um, our contingencies, we have five point five. We brought those numbers to you at the mid-year budget as well. So our projected savings um for twenty three twenty four between salary savings and expenditures, we're thinking it's gonna be about eight point one mil- million. So we're looking at a projected unassigned fund balance available for twenty twenty five of ten million. Our projected revenues are coming in at hundred and five million. Our projected expenditures, which do not include um comp study adjustments, it does include a modest increase for cost of living comes in at one hundred, hundred and seven million. Projected revenue reserves in which also includes two point five million and CIP, seven point seven, basically seven point eight million. And then we have our projected savings. We gave a modest five percent for next year for salaries and benefits and operations. So the modest five percent is mainly because we took when we went and scrubbed the expenditures by departments, by line items. Uh, we know there's probably gonna be a little bit more, but we want to make sure that we kind of modest because we also leave room for the adjustments that come during the year. And so our ending um balance that we are projecting at six thirty two thousand five is four million eighty one thousand. So a top five um revenue generators for two thousand and five is no secret, is pretty much pretty standard. Our TOT comes in at twenty nine percent. I wanna know, want you to note that this number has gone down the last couple of years. It started since I came here was at about thirty five percent. I think last year was at thirty four percent and it's now twenty nine percent, which kind of lets you know how the revenues are starting to flatten out and kind of shift around. Fees and charges are twenty percent. Sales and use tax fifteen percent, property tax fifteen percent, a utility user's tax five percent. And again, these five top areas represent eighty three percent of the general fund revenue. And TOT, of course, is net of the NCIP allocation of sixteen percent. So here's our allocation. Again, you've seen this slide before because our numbers of for TOT is flat projected revenue of thirty six million. Um, NCIP's cut of five point seven million. So the eighty four percent that goes to the general fund is thirty million. The part that goes to the MCCVP, which I think is now C Monterey. See Monterey is one point eight million, and so available for appropriation is twenty eight point four million to the general fund. To give you a um a basic look at the percentages by departments, the general fund department, we have public safety, which is combination combination of police and fire makes up fifty one percent of the general fund. Expenditures, community development, seven percent, parks and rec sixteen percent. Libraries, three percent, conference centers, five percent, and the administrative departments, which the city manager's office, city attorney's office, HR and finance make up nine percent. So positions and other funds. Um, so for this year, the propos- the proposed positions for twenty four twenty five, we propose adding the following positions. There's a Parks and Recs Facility Coordinator, Building Maintenance Worker for Presidio, Senior Project Manager for Presidio, um General Service Field uh Manager for Presidio, Management Analyst and a CMO. Risk um Specialist for Finance Risk Manager, Purchasing Analyst um for Finance, which is being replaced by Finance Analyst. Assistant Library Director and a Library Property Technician, Community Development Assistant Planner, Community Development. We have Assistant Parking Superintendent and Public Works and Parking. HVAC Senior Tech, Presidio Senior Craftsperson and Presidio Library Assistant to RPT, Library and Library and the Library. And the positions that are being removed or some of these are just kind of being swapped from the PCL. We have the Senior Engineer from the Presidio Administrative Analyst from Presidio, Construction Project Manager from Public Works Engineering, the Finance Analyst from Finance and Library RPT and Library. So we are, I'm listing some of the special revenue funds, just a few of them. We have like fifty special revenue funds, but the ones that come up the most. So our neighborhood improvement NCIP, we are projecting revenue at six million and expenditures at three point two. Uh, Public Works will come in later and and bring out the expenditures or the projects that they want to have approved against that six million in revenue for gas tax, um eight hundred twenty three in revenue again for all of these capital improvement projects. So and they'll come in later um from once the projects have been identified. Um, as your PNS, um Street Infrastructure Rehab Fund, we're expecting revenue about twelve million. Presidio thirty million and revenue twenty eight million and expenditures. Thailand's Trust, three point nine in revenue, two point eight in expenditures. For our enterprise funds, we have the sewer maintenance line, two point five in revenue, two point nine in expenses. Marina, three point seven in revenue, two point eight in expenses. Cemetery, three hundred forty four thousand revenue, six hundred thousand in expenses. Parking Fund, eleven point nine in revenues and ten point um one in expenses. Again, we brought this to your attention before. We continue to do some of talk about the couple of the enterprise funds are operate at a loss. So we constantly monitor these accounts and looking um looking at them and trying to find different ways of increasing revenues and decreasing expenditures in these um funds. And we have the internal service funds. Again, the same thing. We have three of these six are upside down, but the revenues and expenses pretty much, they are allocated. The revenues are come in from other funds that use this citywide, so Equipment Replacement Fund. Looking at three point six million in revenue, one point five in expenditures. Vehicle Maintenance Fund, three point three revenues, three point two in expenditures. Our Information Service, four point eight in revenue, five point one. Workers' Comp, four point one and revenue point four point one expenditures last year. Sorry, liability insurance, four point six in revenue, four point seven in expenditures, and then our employee benefits basically match up. So now the good part that Hans was talking to earlier is reserve contributions. So our projected unassigned fund balance at the end is four million eighty one thousand six hundred and forty. This includes, as we talked about earlier, modest anticipated wage adjustment. This does not include adjustments to for the comp study. The twenty four twenty five budget continues, and the city's goal is investing into the reserves. The reserve contributions, they're in line with the city's reserve policies that were adopted last year. So um overall, the budget includes um five point three million dollars towards city reserves, which is approximately five percent of the general fund expenses. So to maintain the dollar amounts, um Economic Recovery Fund is um twenty percent is the max. So about a hundred, one point two million, a million dollars in pension reserve, seven hundred fifty thousand for a conference center facility reserve, five hundred thousand for a sports center, um one million ninety thousand for technology reserve, two hundred thousand city facilities reserve, two hundred fifty thousand central public safety reserve and two hundred fifty thousand for the library facility reserve. So this is a cute little slide that we um came up with um basically showing the history. So at the end of um FY twenty twenty, if you see the first column, the ending balance in a designated for uncertainty, we had thirteen point seven million. And then for Conference Center, there was eighty eight thousand. Um, as of the end of twenty one, there was twelve million in the, what you see as a dip from the economic uncertainty and then the eighty eight thousand remained. So we put in in twenty twenty two is when we put in the policies and started putting money into the reserves. So there is an increase from that twelve million in twenty twenty one to fourteen million. In twenty twenty two, that eighty eight thousand went to eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, and then you can see that they're starting to put numbers in the sports uh facility. We've put seven hundred fifty thousand in twenty twenty two, a million in pension um and infrastructure, um one point five. So I'm gonna skip all the little details and just kind of look at the bottom line number for each year. So if you look at end of twenty twenty two, um it's eighteen million. At the end of twenty twenty three, um twenty seven point nine million, and we're projected at the end of twenty twenty four to be at thirty four point six million. So the total net increase from the year of twenty twenty to the um projection of twenty twenty four, we're looking at the increase of twenty million, twenty point seven million that's been put into reserves over that time period. And so the additions that we're looking at for twenty twenty five, economic uncertainty, one point two million to bring that twenty million up to twenty one. And the amounts are the same as in the policy, seven fifty four. For the conference center, five hundred for the sports center, a million for pension, million for technology to bring it up to three million, city facilities, two hundred, safety building, um two fifty and library, two fifty. So we're looking at the end of um twenty twenty five, um would be thirty nine million that was we have in the reserves. Also on reserves, um that are non-general fund for our special revenue funds for the parking facility. We started, we have two hundred and fifty thousand twenty twenty four, another two fifty for next year. So we're in parking reserve for five hundred thousand. And sea level rise, um five hundred thousand currently, two fifty for next year. So we'll in next year with seven hundred fifty thousand in the reserve for sea level rise retirement fund.
So if I may just interject uh to to explain a little bit about the uh, no, not not so fast. So so um uh the reserves are are there to 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 give us room to breathe, uh to not get caught in a situation where we have to lay off employees or where we have to with that also reduce service levels just to to bridge. But the point with the reserves also is we 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 have the reserves like in the sports center uh of three million dollars. Uh, we are going forward with major rehabilitation in the sports center, i.e. pool replastering, fixing the wall in the back and and a lot of other things. And we cannot draw against those reserves. We 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 don't have to go um and ask others to help us on prolong uh the suffering. Having three million dollars in in the sports center facility reserve will allow us to invest when necessary, um money in into uh new boiler systems that are failing after thirty years. Uh, as I mentioned, the 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 pool plastering and all this, it adds up to slightly over two million dollars. Remember the days when we said we need two million dollars? And we didn't have the money there. So the reserves are there to be used also. We have to, we have to figure out when do we want to use what reserve for the conference center is um our vision right now that we have to accumulate money in the conference center to be able in ten, twelve years, put a CIP project forward in the amount of ten, twelve million dollars, fifteen million to upgrade that economic engine, because that is the economic engine that fills the hotels, that brings tourists throughout the year during the low days here, Monday through Wednesday, Thursdays, not the weekends into into town. And a facility like that needs to look fresh. And it needs to have the latest gimmicks to convince meeting planners to come back time and time again. So that is a reserve that uh will be depleted, and then we have to build it up again and not uh continuously used like the sports center. Pension Reserve, I want to point out as well, culpers um will hit us now and then with um with um increased culpers rates uh as the stock market tumbles up and down, uh so does to the degree culpers follow. And uh but the pension reserve is there to be used, and it's not a pension reserve to to uh keep accumulating funding in perpetuity. We don't know yet what is the right number. Is it seven million or is it ten million? But as part of our next two, three months, we will come back to you after we have uh figured that out with the help of some some outside consultants. Where do we have to stop feeding the pension reserve? Because again, it's not there to 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 keep filling. We have also day to day demands in the city of uh and and you know, programs that the council wants to continue or implement that we have to do that. Technology reserve is is something that is the backbone of IT, and I shared with you a few times how much it costs to to um upgrade the finance system that we have in place. Um, is is uh Windows three point one based originally has been updated a few times, but it's now almost twenty years old that we are, twenty years that we are using. A new finance system is about two point two to two point five million dollars. That's where the money will go to to ensure that we can pay our bills and more importantly, collect all the taxes from our residents. Um, and then uh that was a joke. I I I think that wasn't funny. So uh on a scale of one to ten, there was a four. We have to put money aside for city facilities. Um, again, um I I pointed out the Soviet style restaurants that we have still here and 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 others. So again, I want you to understand that the reserves are there also to be used. Thirty million, thirty, forty million dollars in reserves is gives us room to breathe. Fund for economic uncertainty, that's the one for black swan events. When something really critical happens, what are we doing with with those funds? Okay, if you want to say something else, I interrupted you. I'm sorry. Okay.
So our recommendations is the council received the proposed um twenty four twenty four twenty five budget. And you actually provide any direction or any um requested adjustments that we can go back and work into magic on.
My my last closing remarks, I apologize, mayor, but uh I interrupted Raffalo. So here's my official thinking at the end is um I I tried to 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 do it in a way that that you will remember it because uh you probably don't remember every single number. Uh, so I came up with with the letter P. And then the letter measure P and S, you know, is is very successful, but uh what is important that we as a city now understand what are our priorities with P, starts with P. We have to invest into projects. These are our priorities. Uh, we have to invest into our assets through various projects, but we also have to change paradigms. We have to really look in how do we spend NCIP dollars. Uh, we cannot afford to continue living in the same old paradigm that was established in the eighties. And we are now in the twenty first century, and we have a lot of good things that we need to maintain. So we need to change the paradigm, how we are looking also at 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 spending, allocating funds from the NCIP back into existing assets. And I I told the story during the State of the City address, and I say it again. In nineteen fifty one, our community built Fire Station Twelve on Hawthorne. And in the same year, they built Fire Station Thirteen at Monosito. That was in nineteen fifty one. In nineteen fifty eight, they found the money to uh to build the library as it is right now. In nineteen fifty nine, our community built the the fire station, uh I'm sorry, Fire Station and Public Safety. the, the fire station, I'm, I'm sorry, fire station and public safety building. In between, I don't know the year right now, the youth center at Lake Alastero was built. In nineteen sixty eight, we built Minis Ditch, the tunnel that we have. I can continue. All those assets were done because the community at that time understood the P of priority. And we need to look again and prioritize. We had great years where we could do a lot of nice things, but all those other assets have aged and they were not taken care of. We have to change the paradigm. And why do we change the paradigm? And that's the last P I let you remember is because we have to be pragmatic. Now is the time to be pragmatic. If we are not pragmatic in our choices, at the end of the day, we will have a lot of stuff that will falter and will break and we will live in a, in a, in a state of desolation. At the end of the day, it comes down to choices. It's all about choices. Do you want to have three fire stations or a fourth one at highway sixty eight? Do you want to cut it down to two because you cannot afford to have four anymore? Do we want to have five community centers operational? Do we want to have a library open seven days a week? Do we want to have a police department staff that can respond to any type of callouts? Do we want a fire department like that? It comes down to choices. We do not have a revenue problem. We have a problem in spending. And now is the time to consider prioritization for our projects, to consider a paradigm change and to be utmost pragmatic. And I think our community will understand that now is the time to really look closely. How are we spending our funds? The money is there. We just need to reallocate it in a way that we all understand we are serving not just our needs today, but also our generations for tomorrow. And that was my closing remark.
Thank you, Hans. Appreciate the closeout of that. And Rafaela, thank you for the presentation. I think your Ps are reminding me of the days when Mayor Clyde sat in this chair. So that was a nice memory. And, and I think your, your, your P for paradigm shift, I think speaks really well for, I think, the direction that this council is, is willing to work with the community on. Because in as much as we do have the funding to make it work, there's a lot of projects and programs out there that I'm sure a lot of you are going to speak to today in, in public comment and make sure, making sure that you're advocating for maintaining those services or, or amplifying those services further. And all the while, there hasn't been enough funding set aside to take care of these huge pieces of infrastructure that we've, that we've kind of kicked the can down the road for, for far too long. And so here we are trying to create opportunities to put enough funding aside. And already right away, we're looking at trying to tap into that for needs of today. And so we need to make sure that we can continue to put funding aside for future maintenance, but also look at opportunities for, for taking care of infrastructure right here, right now. So with that, I'll turn it to the council for questions. Councilor Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I have a few questions. It is, okay. I'm looking at some, uh, some information that was also in the agenda report. So in terms of the projected revenues, there's, uh, there's an item, other taxes and then other revenues. Can someone elaborate on or, or provide examples of what that includes?
So, so for other taxes and revenues, we have, it's in there. I was in that one number. It's a combination of, like, we may have dog license fees. The smaller ones, the smaller ones, the tax permit, tax permits, those kind of things that goes into that number. So it's just a combination of, after we have the big ticket items, we have wrap them all, the other ones and just kind of drop them in the other. So it's not huge tickets. If you look at the, the other revenues, it's one point three in total for probably about twenty other revenue sources that would make up that number.
Got it. Thank you. In the special revenue funds table, the street infrastructure rehab fund, there's a revenue figure there of twelve million and expenditure of zero. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the measure on P and S. So what happens is with most of the CIP numbers, so most of these, public works will come back at a later time with their projects. So we just list out what the revenues are. So we don't know what they're going to spend yet, but we know that. So they'll come and appropriate those expenditures at a later time once they identify the projects.
That's right. Got it. Thank you. Actually, that's, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Councilor Barber.
Thank you so much, Ken, for the presentation. Appreciate your team putting a lot of time into it. I did have a question. I know you, you talked and said something about allocation process changing, but not, but somehow it wasn't impacting the bottom line. Can you kind of walk me through that a little bit?
So for example, and I'm just throwing out random numbers here. These aren't precise numbers. So let's just say for workers comp, let's say we pay twelve million dollars a year to our insurance, for our workers comp insurance and the things that are there. We take that workers comp and we bill it out to each department and it's based on, it's based on risk level. It's also based on the amount of bodies you have in a department. And so this year we did a little bit different allocation to kind of spread it out a little bit more. What ended up happening is some departments, because of the amount of people they have in there, the, um, the total amount allocated to that department significantly increased. And so we want to make sure that that, and this probably not skewed a little bit more than what we wanted to be skewed. So when we go back and look at it a little bit more, the total amount that the city is spending is still twelve million. It's just how much is going to be allocated to finance, the parks and recs, the police, the fire. That part will change a little bit, but the total out the door is still, would still be the twelve million.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also, I noticed that there were three library jobs to be added. And I thought I heard that it was going to be, I thought it was one, one more library position that was needed to have it to be open for, uh, six days. I think it's open five days a week. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we are, we are right now at five days a week with the additions that we are proposing. The library director has assured us he can open six days a week.
So with the three positions, they're able to open.
Yeah.
And then I think one was almost like a wash, if I saw that correctly.
One was basically upgrading an RPT to a full-time. So we'd take the library, librarian RPT out in order to create a librarian full-time.
Right. So it's almost like it's just two cents because one is just being upgraded. It's already existing. Okay. Thank you. And I have one more. The sewer line maintenance, uh, does that include the increase, the, the proposed increase?
Not yet.
Okay. I was just curious.
We, we, we don't count the chicken until they hatch.
All right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yeah, I've got some comments that I'll hold for later, but I've got a couple of questions for now. So, um, in terms of the reserves, I'm wondering if we have looked at the rate of interest we're getting on the different reserves? And maybe that would be something when you bring this back, if we could see. Cause as Hans mentioned, obviously some of these reserves are probably going to be longer term and others, we probably need more liquidity and need to be able to access on a, on a, on a different basis. But I think it would be really good for us to see kind of how, what kind rate of return are we getting on the different reserves? With the understanding that they won't all be the same.
Yeah. So, so if you look at page fourteen of our package, interest, we estimated one point six million dollars coming in. Okay. Those numbers were a year ago, two years ago at two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Everybody knows in this room how the interest rates have improved if you put it into the right accounts. So we are doing that as well and one point six million in interest is not too shabby. We are looking also at the pension reserve fund. There is a different scenario. We are actually in the, in a, in a portfolio there that, that is very conservative but increases. And so we can report back there also to you how we have improved our situation. Now we bought into the market there when it was, uh, last year, July, August, it was a higher market at that time. It was probably two weeks ago really stellar, if you would have asked us two year, two weeks ago. But in the past two weeks, the stock market has kind of taken a step back. So, but we'll, we'll give you that number as well, but the, the one point six million in interest, we haven't seen in, in decades here.
Okay, that's great. And then, um, I guess, I understand the desire and the interest in continuing to address our reserves. And I, you know, I shared the kind of philosophy that you expressed earlier about the importance of reserves. But I guess I'm a little surprised and wonder if maybe staff could explain. This budget projects a two million dollar deficit spending. So I assume we'll be using our unassigned kind of funds for that to meet, to, to balance that deficit. But at a, if, if we're deficit spending this year and then at the same time, we're increasing our reserves by, I think about five million and we're also adding thirteen new positions. Could you give me a little bit of the flavor of the discussion the staff had about that? Because I mean, we could balance the budget, just maybe not put quite as much into reserve or maybe instead of adding thirteen positions, add ten positions, you know what I mean?
And on Rafaela to put up the slide where, where we show everything at the end. So we will be good at, at a tune of four million dollars, we estimate at the end of next year. But it's, it's kind of a, I, I think it's a good best practice as we have done it and we'll, we'll show you that slide again and if you can pull it up, please. Because we will have salary savings, we will have operational savings. And so you, you don't want to undercut yourself by, by not budgeting appropriately. So I want to see the, the slide where we start with, uh, revenues as, and expenditures. Because I also never understood that slide until somebody explained it to me. Go back. So this is the slide and Rafaela, if you want to do it again, it, it kind of showcases why we end up where we end up.
Yeah. So as we're starting this year with fifteen point five coming out and unassigned, the reserve contributions that we made this year came up to eight million. Then we have our contingencies or things that we put aside for mid-year like our, there's an economic development deal that we had on the table. There's also some other things that we know that were coming up that we will have to pay for. And so we also looked at savings. So we have projected savings. So when we, we talked about it mid-year, we talked about it mid-year, when we looked at the numbers and said, to do a base calculation of how much have we been saving the last couple of years as far as monitoring our expenses or the salary savings that we came up, we did a, a base projection and we came up with, I think we were about sixty percent, twenty-four percent of salaries. We did that calculation based on seventy-four percent being the total amount of salaries and then X amount of percent based on the expenditures and came up with an estimated eight point one million that we will be savings. So starting that would take that down to basically ten million that will start, start with. So that ten million will take up that two million dollar deficit between the revenues and expenses there. And it also covers the CIP two point five and the revenue projected reserves for next year. So that's how we got to. And then we're still expecting some more savings next year and salary savings that we won't fill the sixty-one proof vacancies or some of the operating and maintenance over them expenses that we won't do. So we're projecting that three point six million to be some savings.
So let me see if I can kind of make sense of this for myself. So we're entering the year with fifteen million basically carryover of unassigned money. So those are monies that we didn't spend, but we made. And, uh, and so it's kind of one-time money, but there it is.
Right.
And then in terms of our projected revenues and projected expenses, there's about a two million dollar deficit, but we're going to make up that difference out of the unassigned fund. And then we're also planning for salary increases that would also kind of be offset by those reserves. Is that more or less? And so in the end, we end up with about still four million in unassigned. So our unassigned drops from fifteen million to four million.
Right. But in that salary increases, the, it's salary savings. So we're thinking five percent modestly for salary savings for those positions that won't get filled next year that we're planning on.
Oh, okay. Hold. So, so that, I guess I misunderstood that. So we're not planning a five percent, we're not building a five percent potential cola into this. We're actually planning on a five percent salary reduction because of.
We, it's the, it's the, it's the vacancy rate that we are carrying. Right now we have fifty-five unfilled full-time employee positions. So the five percent is basically, is, is not a cola increase shape balistery in the background. This is basically salary savings that, uh, that we anticipate of vacation, uh, vacation of, of positions and not being filled but vacant. And we, we used to bake that number in at about two point five percent. We are carrying as, as council knows, because I update you regularly about this, anywhere between fifty-five to sixty-five vacant positions, we are working very hard to retain everyone that we recruit right now. And just to give you another number, we have nineteen engineering positions, nine are filled right now. We have ten empty engineering positions right now. That's why also we cannot kick out the projects as fast as we want to.
Okay. So this is making a little more sense for me. And then I guess one thing that maybe would help me a little bit when this comes back is, so we're using some one-time monies to balance the budget. How many, how much of the expenses are one-time? Because if you understand where I'm going with that, it, it makes sense to, to use one-time money on one-time expenses, but it doesn't make sense to use one-time money on ongoing expenses. So if we could maybe get a little clarification when this comes back on that. And then my last question, which I think also is probably something that I would look to maybe more for the follow-up budget meeting. In the past, I think we, our goal for the sports center was something like eighty percent. Am I getting that right or was it seventy percent?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Okay. And then I think for a while during COVID, obviously it fell quite a bit below that. I'd just be interested to see, have we been making progress this year? And what are we building into this? Are we planning fifty percent, sixty percent?
So, so we, we have definitely made progress and compliments go to our entire sports center team. But we are right now at a cost recovery rate of fifty-five to sixty percent. We are still about three thousand memberships below where we were in twenty nineteen. So yes, we have done strides to get back there, but we've also kept our sports center staffing appropriately lean, shall I say. We had at a side in twenty nineteen, I believe twenty-nine to thirty full-time positions there. We are operating the sports center right now with, I believe, eleven or twelve full-time positions. So.
So again, how many? Six full-time positions?
Okay, I, I was optimistic. So I, I, we have six full-time positions right now. So again, compliments again to our, our sports center team, getting this done. And I appreciate Karen telling me the right number because I don't want to get, I don't want to undersell our activity there. It's, it's even better than I thought. So we, again, fifty-five percent to sixty percent cost recovery. And we are running a very lean operation right now with a bunch of part-timers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Perfect. You will go to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Rafaela on page eighteen. You talk about the measure S and measure P, which is the dedicated revenue. Where does measure X fall in? I don't see what our projected amount is each year. I know it's not anywhere near as much as measure S. But do you have a, a figure for us for measure X?
There was a slide, there was on a slide. I remember seeing.
Okay, I missed that.
I don't know if it was in the staff report, but I think I did see it in the presentation.
Okay. Rafaela, maybe you could just call it up or tell me what. Okay, Rafaela, maybe you could just call it up or tell me what that amount is.
Oh, no, we don't have measure X. You didn't show measure X. It was the guest.
Yes, Rafaela, when we come back, maybe we should just add it to the street infrastructure because that makes sense to have that along with P and S. For those, for those dollars to accurately.
Hans, Andreas. Do you have?
We, we have the number, Councilmember Smith, we'll give it to you right now.
Okay.
We have 1.195 in measure X.
Okay. It always looks better to have those numbers reported, right? So we, we may as well have it on that chart. The other question is, when we were mid-year and we were making our decisions on the allocations to the variety of the reserves. It seems like, if my memory serves me right, your projections were pretty accurate in terms of where we felt like we would finish the end of the fiscal. So I guess the question is, were there any surprises compared to what we had in our mid-year? Relative to the reserve allocation and the year-end funding left over?
Not at mid-year. The 15.5 million, I believe we thought we were going to end the year at 10 million last year. But we actually ended it, ended it with 15.5. That was the, the biggest thing. And then after we did the allocations. And as far as the reserves have made, you're the only increase, all the ones that we showed you at mid-year, they were just basically a report out. With the exception of the increase, I think it was by 700,000 to the economic uncertainty. Because as the expenditures for general fund increases to get it, to keep it, maintain that 20%, that dollar amount goes up. So that was the only increase. Everything else was just, was, was actually approved already in the prior year's budget. And it was just a report out to show that this is what the balance is now.
Right. And I appreciate that. So I want to recognize that when did we move our policy from 2013 to, from 13% to 20%? If somebody could jog my memory, what year was that that we took a bold step to say 20%?
So there were two, there was, I can't remember when it went, moved from 13 to 16.6. But I think just last year that we did the increase from 16.6 to 20%.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. And I think that that's important to acknowledge that, you know, we've had significant changes. This council has had policy shifts that's put us in a position to have those reserve allocations. So I just wanted to point out that I think it's important to always remember where we've been and what it's taken to get us where we are. And those benchmarks of how we are changing that 20%, it's nice to see that hang there. But somewhere we need to memorialize that the track upward is a positive move by this council. That's the only comments I have or questions.
Okay. With that, we will take it out to the public. So again, we're going to offer folks the opportunity at the front end here to identify yourself if you want to speak during public comment. So for those in the chamber who would like to speak, if you can identify yourself by either standing up in line or you can, you can raise your hand. So we have one in the back, we have two on the side. Anybody else? Am I missing a hand? We have three folks in the room that want to speak. All right, we'll go check online. For folks on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have one online. All right, we'll go ahead and start here in the chamber and you have three minutes.
Yes. Is this correct?
You are good to go.
Okay. As I identified myself, I'm Robin Dometer. And we have been in Skyline Forest and many citizens in Monterey working to try to get the intersection of Skyline Forest and Highway 68 safe. We have done a lot of work with Pete Hendricks. He's the head of the District Five. Are you all right?
Yeah, thank you. We need, we need to buy new chairs, but we don't have money.
Good timing.
And that's what I'm here for. I'm asking for the council to consider funding a study for the safety of Skyline Forest. And we've asked for this several times. But Pete Hendricks, who's head of the Caltrans, has had many meetings with us and that's what he suggested to do. He also suggested that we do a survey or questionnaire, which we're working on presently to get, to be able to give to the city. Feedback from people that are residents of Monterey and probably even other places that use it. I was interested in the Hans here, P for people is my thing. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about safety for people in Monterey. And the safety study that has been done, hasn't been anything done on that. Other than just a very superficial look around for 45 years. And that came from Caltrans to do that. So we are, we know that Measure X has got money for funding for streets and safety. I don't know where the money actually comes from because I'm just new at listening to your budget. But that's what we would like to have done. And we have probably, it may be like maybe $15,000 to have that study. And you could work with Caltrans. Now, I came here with several of our neighbors and friends who support what we're trying to do. And I would like all of them to stand and address this. These, these are just some of the people that I've worked with that have been wonderful. And they, because I didn't know that this budget meeting was coming up, I didn't have enough time to get any more. But they all have been working very, very diligently to make our community safer. And that's the reason I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And thank you for speaking on behalf of that entire group and we, we see you and hear you. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Esther Malkin, resident of Laguna Grande neighborhood. First of all, I want to thank the staff for these presentations that are so easy for us to understand. I've actually attended one of the meetings and I was really impressed with the whole financial staff. And at this, by the same token, I was pretty appalled that previous administrations didn't set aside the funding that we needed to for infrastructure. And that it's taken us to this point, which is unfortunate because you guys as a responsible council are now going to, to take this on. And unfortunately, you're going to take the hits for the things that people are not going to be happy about that have to happen for us to stay solvent. And continue, you know, providing even the, the services that aren't being cut because it wasn't addressed properly in the past. In the meetings that I attended, I was frankly, and actually she showed it today. I was frankly surprised at the ranking of the priorities of the police department and the fire department. I think that's really, somehow I think that's off. I can't imagine that residents don't see the value in making sure that our fire and police department are 100% up to speed. For when they dial 911, they show up. Because they do complain when they have to wait. But if it's an emergency, they expect immediate attention. And that can't happen if we aren't prioritizing those two departments. So public safety is really should be, you know, top of mind. And I was shocked to see that low ranking. In the meeting I attended, a number of us were trying to discuss options. And one of the things that kept coming up often was a public-private partnership. We're going to have to find ways to get that sports center paid for and helped financially. And I don't see any other way, especially with the returns you're getting on it. Lastly, I want to bring up, Hans mentioned the number of community centers that we have. And Hilltop is in an area where there's another one not far, which is Schultz. Having those two there and one of them literally falling apart is not very smart. I propose that gets raised, the city puts 100% affordable housing there. And that will be a significant amount of, of units that we can get in that area. That will help us with our RINA numbers, help us retain our workers and keep people housed instead of having them become homeless. That is an area that's large enough that we can make a serious impact. And we already own it. We just do what we're doing over here on Madison. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shay Ballistieri. I am the GEM chairman. And a couple of things that I was looking over here was, I don't have a prepared statement. Basically saying that the city. Is interested in. Finding fair and competitive market rate compensation plays through effective labor negotiations. And last time I came here, I made a statement in regards to. The Brown Act. And I was told by our management that my statement was not true. And if you want to basically look at it from this perspective, I said that the city had no responses. They did respond, but ultimately it was their reply that they didn't want to talk to us yet. And we really haven't discussed anything. We don't have any tentative agreements on anything. We haven't discussed any of the things listed. That are essentially the meat and potatoes of what our employees need. And P is for people, the people who keep the city clean, to keep the streets flowing, to keep the sewers flowing. And we need to basically make sure we take care of these people. And there was a one thing I wanted to read. It's right in front of me and I can't seem to find it because I am nervous. Meet and confer in good faith means that a public agency or such representatives as it may designate and represent. Representatives of recognized employee organizations shall have the mutual obligation to personally meet and confer promptly upon request. I said this before. We're supposed to exchange freely information, opinions and proposals. Haven't really done that. And the last part that I didn't put in here, but I should probably put in here, is the process should include adequate time for the resolution of impasses. Because the public agency is supposed to, I'm jumping all over the place, not my best day here. It is supposed to reach an agreement on matters within the scope of representation prior to the adoption by the public agency of its final budget. Here's the thing, we haven't gotten anything done, no tentative agreements. And how many, but how many council meetings are left before the end of the fiscal year? Four? We're supposed to do all of our negotiating plus potential impasse before that takes place. We all know it's not going to happen. It's not possible to potentially reach an impasse before the end of our contract. We simply not enough time. There's never been enough time and we repeat this every single year. So if we're talking about people, basically the people who work here in GEM are presented with the situation where. The fiscal year ends and it's either take it or starve. And it's usually nothing we've ever agreed to, nothing we're really negotiating because we haven't negotiated anything yet. And I'm not particularly fond of the way the system works or how it's been worked with our employees.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to cut you off here because the buzzard is buzzing.
Yeah, usually I leave before that.
Thank you, Shay. Appreciate you. Appreciate your public comment. All right. And that's it for the chamber. So we'll go online. We have one speaker online.
Yes, calling on Lori. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thanks to the Hans and the city and Rafaela's presentation. It was quite good. And I could probably dive into that a little more. It's super great to see reverse, reserve funds being set aside. So thank you all for working on doing that. I do have one question and I don't want to beat that slide to death, but the, the one you pulled up, the general fund overview projection slide. To just make sure I'm understanding it right, the one, and maybe some of that money is going into more reserves. But when I looked at it, it looks like starting in 2023, there was 15 million where we got to start the year off in 2024, 10 million. And then in 2025, 4 million. So that trajectory is going down from 15 to 10 to 4 million. So I'm wondering if that's a little concerning and why that is. And then just, just in general, I, I will probably for the next budget meeting and some of the sewer increase meeting, I think they might be at the same time in June. I've got some more to stuff I'll send along that I'm working on. But just in general, I'd like to see general fund dollars used more for the good of the whole. And that would be infrastructure, police, fire, library, some of the things we've already talked about. And I know there's a lot of the feel-good projects to help folks. And, and I know that they're all good and I'm probably going to be throw tomatoes out for some of these things. But when I see, and I didn't see that in the budget anywhere, like the, some of the general fund dollars, like 250 quarters of million dollar chunks for the rental registry that were taken out. 250,000 for the rental assistance. And that's a nice program. There's a lot of people that need help, way more people that need help than a program like that's ever going to address. So that's a, right there, that's just a half a million dollars. And the rental registry was supposed to be, you know, self-sustaining. So we're already borrowing money. Half a million dollars could do a lot toward the good of the whole. I'd like to just toss one idea out there. I figured it out talking to sewer folks yesterday. That it ends up being in this proposed increase coming up $62,000 in full for the whole year. So all of us have endured these doublings of everything across the board. PG&E, CalM, cable and internet, Monterey One, now sewer, even the sports centers three times more than I was paying for COVID hit. Car insurance increases by 50%, renters and property owners insurance doubles. So it would be really nice to get some sort of a reprieve if the city could pick up that 62,000 this year. Or the good of the whole in the sewer rate increase. So I think I'll have to stop there because I think the buzzer is going to buzz on me, but I will be back. So thank you very much.
Okay. With that, we'll bring it back to the council for any final comments. Who wants to start us off? Councilmember Hapa?
Yeah. So I wanted to acknowledge staff's efforts at community outreach on the budget. This was something that I think is really important and I'm glad that we did that. And pleased with, with the results of that. I also wanted to acknowledge and appreciate staff for kind of looking at realignment and looking at historical budget expenses versus, you know, expenses versus revenues and seeing what are we not really actually using? And then reallocating those monies. So I think that's a good practice. It's something good to do, you know, every three years or so, and, and we should make, kind of make that a, a practice. And I, I'm also glad to see that we're continuing to be committed to, you know, building our reserves responsibly. And appreciated the city manager's comment though, which is that they don't necessarily have to, it's not like we're building them forever. We have to figure out for each one, what is sort of the appropriate goal. So I mean, I think that, that's very good. One thing I do want to bring up, which is the folks who spoke here today about the intersection at Skyline and Highway 68. I'm going to be bringing a request to agendize that. And I'll be sharing that with the city manager. So for future, future discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. So I'm also going to start with community engagement. That's one of the first items on the report. Great results in terms of the survey, 588. That's a, a really impressive number. Knowing how surveys can be very challenging for folks to participate and get data from that. So 588, that's, that's really good. Very happy to see that. And great that in-person sessions were also scheduled. I did notice that the in-person sessions were held on a Monday, Thursday and, and Saturday in the morning. And seeing that only 27 folks attended, I would just.
They was morning.
Say that again?
Monday, Wednesday was in the evening.
Correct. Sorry. That's, that's why I separated. Correct, sorry, that's, that's why I separated, tried to separate Saturday, Saturday morning, the others were in the evenings, but thank you. But I would invite maybe a little bit further analysis in terms of when these sessions are held, because I think there's something to be said there about, you know, folks being able to attend at certain times after work, that kind of thing. But still, I appreciate, you know, the dedication to reaching out and engaging with community. There was an item here that was mentioned also in the, in the, in the report. And that being one of the city's strategic priorities, provide fair, competitive and market rate compensation to employees throughout effective labor negotiations, didn't talk too much about that, but I just wanted to highlight that and appreciate that that's also something that's front and center for, for staff. Another item that came up also in terms of I guess I'mma, I'mma jump on the, on the letter P bandwagon and say parks and rec. So recreation centers came up. And I think there's, there's a good opportunity here to think about possible consolidation, as it was mentioned in public comment. And in doing so, also reigniting that interest and that assessment of where Casanova Park Center sits in the bigger scheme of things. Currently, the rec centers that we have in the city, as was noted by public comment as well, they're pretty close, in close proximity to each other. So having a rec center with strong programming and, and more available programming for our community along District Four and the North Fremont segment, I think is, is definitely something that I've expressed in the past. Because my neighbors have expressed it and I know that it's also been expressed by other council members or folks on the council here. So I'd like to see also that be included in the conversation as we talk about possible consolidation and that kind of thing. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilor River?
Yes, I echo my colleagues with thanking the staff and the city manager for your hard work again. Just really had a couple of questions from the public comment. I appreciate council member Hoffa bringing an agendizing skyline. I'm just curious, and this may or may not be something that you can note, whether that could work, that study could work with a collaboration with the county or with one of the utility companies as far as the safety piece, whether that would be a consideration. I'm not sure whether it would be or not, but just wondering whether that could be a consideration for that.
Yeah, we have to look into this, we're talking about the Caltrans intersection. And so I'm always intrigued how other agencies say, well, other cities should pay for that, but we will bring, once it's agendized, we will bring forward an analysis that includes options such as TMC or the county or others that you're proposing to, to look into that and helping us fund it. And so that's absolutely something we'll, we'll have to evaluate.
Thank you. The other thing was dealing with the sports center when public comment, I believe it was Esther who said, was talking about for the sports center, dealing with the public-private type of partnership. I was curious, because I know I spoke about this before, dealing with the sports center, about the friends of the sports center, just like they have the friends of the library. Whether that would be looked into a little bit more and seeing how other things can be offset. Not everything, of course, not, not big items, but other things can be offset because you have a lot of people who, and you even saw that even in the community outreach, that that came up as well. Along with the library, so I'd like to see a little bit more of that kind of moving towards some sort of a partnership or movement that we can be able, so that that can offset some of the costs. That's it.
Councilor Smith?
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you staff for this first cut at it and allows us to see where we're going. You know, as we always say that the, the budget is really a reflection of our choices and our priorities, so I appreciate that from the city manager. You know, I don't have a sense of what the work plan will look like or any changes in the work plan. Specifically under the public works. So I would like to know a little bit more as we go forward and tonight is not the time, but I know we have had some projects that we, we've looked at to mitigate some traffic impacts on Del Monte. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that and where that falls into future expenditures and possibly, you know, some shortages of funding sources. So we're still dealing with one of the high priorities for our community, which is, you know, mitigation and transportation. And so we obviously hear that a lot. And I think Del Monte is one of those key areas that we still have some improvements that we'd like to look at. So I'd like to hear more about that in the future. I concur with Councilmember Garcia's comment about Casanova. I think back in the heyday, that was a very vibrant, active and program-driven with lots of kids and activity. And I know right now it's not fully being used, but I think there's some opportunity to figure out how we can get the services back to the neighborhood and the North Fremont, because there, there really is no other opportunity from the, from that side of town. The other thing is, there were some comments about some of the other neighborhood centers we have. And Schultz Park is a senior center. So I want to honor and recognize the fact that that's still an appropriate place, it's not very big. But has a place in senior support and activities there as well. So that's really the only comments I have right now. I support Alan Hoffa's proposal to come in with an agenda request, so we can fully engage and have a, a full council conversation about Highway 68. And the Skyline entry, so that's important for me as well. And I'll leave the comments there.
Alrighty, and I'll close this out with a few thoughts. I spoke to earlier around my feelings around the reserves and I just want to continue to push us to bolster those. I know it's all in balance, but you know, I can't remember what the exact number was, Hans, but I remember in a recent budget discussion over the last few years, there was something like $100 million that we needed to spend in infrastructure needs as it relates to the police and fire station. The library, that number might have changed a little bit, the sports center, the conference center, but nonetheless, we're talking about a lot of, a lot of revenue that needs to be spent that we don't have. And so you know, I think we need to have a deeper discussion around what does the plan actually look like and how are we going to achieve that? I imagine that there's probably going to have to be some level of increasing revenue. Does that include tax increases? That's a tough conversation to have right now. What does that look like in respect to cutting expenditures? That's always a difficult discussion to have. But we need to weigh these things and, and have those hard conversations, have those really challenging things that are really uncomfortable to do. If we're going to be serious about addressing some of these critical issues that are facing our city. All right, that being said, I wanted to touch on the sports center for a second. I do want us to be able to find a space of getting back to 75% cost recovery somehow, but I also recognize that there's a balance that exists in there because if we charge too much for the fees associated with being a member at the sports center, then that, that decreases membership, so then that's lower revenue and it's like the chicken or the egg thing. So I think that there is a conversation that needs to be had there. That being said, I think it rolls into another point about the sports center. When we had the discussion around the sports center last year sometime. One of the points that I made at the end was the idea of hosting a council meeting in the sports center. And so I'm, I'm, I'm want to fulfill that, that, that goal that, that was stated then. Because I think it would be a great opportunity for the entire council with the public to be in this space. Maybe even pair it with a tour and we walk around and we can just appreciate what's going on there a little bit better. That being said, I think it could also be a time to dive in a little bit deeper and look at what the future of the sports center looks like. And I think recreation activities in general. This is an area that there's going to need to be hard conversations and I agree with my colleague Councilmember Garcia and I appreciate you, Councilmember Smith. I'm going to take a little bit of a side note conversation here and really just dig into my appreciation for you, Ed, because I think it speaks to this council and the community's need or ability to be able to, as we transition to these district-based elections, to not just think about our own districts. This, the, the, the recreation facility that, that Ed is speaking to in support of is not in his district. So he's not saying, these are my Legos, let me have what I can do. He's thinking about citywide, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of appreciation for that and jump on the bandwagon that we do need to look at. This is an equity issue and making sure that we provide services on that part of, of town. There is some disproportionate balance as it exists there. And I don't know what that looks like and I'm going to give an example, but I'm not saying this is the direction that we have to go, go in. Schultz Park, Ed, you were just speaking to that. I don't know what that looks like, but there are three parks, there are three recreation centers in New Monterey. So what does that look like for us? There's two, but there's three parks, let me clarify. And so how do we kind of create that balance to make sure that all parts of our city are being touched in a more equitable way? So I, I just bring this up to say that it provides a space for us to have a deeper conversation around what that looks like. And maybe when we meet in the sports center in a, in a month, maybe soon to be, we can, we can dive in deeper on that topic. One thing that stuck out to me that we don't talk about too much was the budget line items associated with the cemetery. I think it showed 344,000 as far as revenue and 601 as far as expenditures. That's an example of something that I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what makes that difficult, but I think the, the small things, you know, that's $300,000 right there, that I think we could dig in deeper on and figure out what that looks like. I don't know if that's something that the council can do, I imagine that staff is doing whatever they can to try to right-size that ship. But it might be helpful to, to hear a little bit more about kind of what the challenges are there. I, I will speak to the, the community engagement piece. Really, really appreciate, many kudos to staff for taking the time to, to do that. I've actually heard a lot of feedback from folks that were able to attend or participate in the survey. And people are appreciative of their ability to be able to hear from staff about what's going on and engage just like it was stated in the agenda report, the presentation in a, in a non-formal way, right? It's hard for folks to come up here, engage in a conversation with three minutes during a public council meeting. But when you're, when you meet somebody in a community center and you can, and can ask questions, it helps be able to answer some of those questions that are posed up there in the community, so, and educate, which is a big part of the process when you talk about public financing. So just really appreciate the, the work being done there. One thing that when looking at the numbers about that, that stuck out for me was just the need and it, I think it was evidence of the folks in the room or participating in the council meeting today. Where are the young, younger folks? And this isn't to say that we need to listen to younger folks at the expense of, of older folks. But we need to make sure that we're finding a way of being innovative and creative in regards to our outreach. So how are we reaching out to certain organizations to, to find ways of engaging them? Councilmember Garcia has been doing a lot of work with CCA, and I don't know what the acronym stands for, you have to help me, Community Center for Center for Community Advocacy. So anyways, there's a lot of opportunities and interesting ways that we can continue to push the curtain, but I just want to give kudos because I know that we've already been doing a lot to push community engagement in a way that the city hasn't previously in the past. I want to lean into another point here, which is our need to expand opportunities and I'm going to speak to three areas. Lobbying legislatures, I think we need to build that into a work plan. Establishing legislative priorities. How are we letting our legislatures know that these are our, say, top three issues? Because I see it all the time, our legislatures, when, when jurisdictions do go to them and, and give them their priorities, they're getting funding. They, they can out request funding in their budget, we may not always get it, but in the year that we do get it, it's going to be helpful. So we need to make sure that we're looping that in and focus on applying for grant funding opportunities. And I know Mark is actively doing work on trying to find opportunities as it relates to the conference that Hans, Mark and I went to last month or earlier this month for the Association of Defense Communities and where the opportunities lie there. But we need to make sure that we're taking advantage of these opportunities and build that, that, that muscle, so that we can find new opportunities that aren't necessarily focused on increasing revenue from, from tax increases. And then the last thing I will speak to is kind of maybe in conclusion, there's a lot, there's a lot of different things that the city of Monterey is focused on. We have police and fire, which I, I will say aren't going anywhere. And if anything, we need to make sure that we strengthen those, those sectors of our city services to make sure that they can continue providing a safe community. So I just want to echo Esther's comments earlier, we have Parks and Rec, we have, we have the library, we have the sports center, the conference center, we have the wharf, I mean, there's so many services that are being provided in the city. I think more so than what people would expect, a city of our typical size of population. There's a lot going on and it's very complex and very challenging. I, I forgot, another big thing is our contract with the Presidio. And these all take a lot of capacity, so just a lot of appreciation for staff. I, I do want to bring into the, to the fold of the conversation, the impacts of climate change. That ship is moving, we're seeing the impacts of it and it's going to continue to rise as time goes on. And so we've had some of those conversations here. But we, what does that look like for us to bolster our wharves and make sure that they're ready to go? I know that wharf two needs a lot of work and so the funding that needs to go into that, the storm water system, we had that conversation at a recent council meeting when we talked about increasing our rates for, for wastewater treatment. And then the tunnel, and Hans spoke about that earlier. How do we make sure that as the sea level rises, that we're, we're able to have a major artery for New Monterey, Cannery Row, Pacific Grove? How do we make sure that we, we keep that resilient and ready to go, so that we're not putting the city in its residents and visitors in a precarious situation? So again, a lot going on, but a lot of kudos to staff for all the work that it took to put this together and that, everything that you guys do for us every single day. Just seriously thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Monterey. Alrighty. With that, we're going to transition to closed session. There's one closed session item, it's conference with Agency Labor Negotiators for Employee Organizations, GEM, MEA, MPA, PLMA, MFFA, MFCOA and MMEA. Thank you for the acronyms, so I didn't have to read that all. All right, any public comment on the closed session item, checking in the chamber, anybody in the chamber which should speak on the closed session item? All right, we'll check online, do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online. Thank you everybody, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.